It's time to save a little money sometime, I'm sorry. We could possibly get another grant.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone will please stand and we'll say the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And Dr. Whaley, would you lead us in both, please?
Father, we come before you today, we have important items to discuss. Father, we just ask for your guidance and wisdom. You're the source of all knowledge and understanding. We seek your direction as we make decisions that are important. Help us to listen to one another attentively with open hearts and minds. We just thank you so much for this lovely community where we live. We ask you to bless this country under its new leadership, this state, this county, and particularly this wonderful city. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we'll have the previous meeting, which was January twenty-first, for a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And remember, everyone speaking to your mics. If you will turn them on and make sure they're pulled up. Okay, the next item is approval of agenda or motion to amend, and I do believe we have motion for several things. And the first one, I'll go ahead and say it, Jack, and then you can say the rest.
Okay, that's fine.
We're going to change the wording, well, under E, five E, it says budget move line item on building to vehicle. That is actually for the purchase of a vehicle for the park department. And the amendment will be done later when we amend the budget. So, that's how that should have read right there. So, that would be the first part. Jack?
We need to add a bid that Darvin gave us for Temple. We need to add that on to the agenda. And I would like to take, because the chief judge and the solicitor is A and C, I want to move to B and drop B down to C.
Is there a motion?
He just made it. I second it.
Okay. Everyone agree? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so the next item will be our action items. The first one is an ordinance to fix the compensation for the chief judge or the municipal court for the city of Blue Ridge. And I believe you guys discussed that at the last meeting, is that correct?
We did.
Is there, and this will be the first reading, so we don't have to have a motion, but... Any questions, or? Okay. Moving on to the next item, we're going to do C, which is what Jack asked to move up to the next one, we're moving it to B. And this is a resolution of the city council, the city of Blue Ridge, to fix the compensation for the solicitor of the municipal court of the city of Blue Ridge and for other purposes, being BR two zero two five dash six. Is there a, is there any discussion on that? I guess I should call for a motion first. Is there a motion to pass this resolution?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Everybody want to understand what this is?
Yes.
These are the raises we're giving the chief judge and solicitor. Okay.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
The next one is a resolution of the city council of the city of Blue Ridge, Georgia, to opt out of the homestead exemption pursuant to OC GA four eight dash five dash four four point two, being BR two zero two five dash five. And we have had all of our public hearings, correct? And we are taking the same action as the county and I believe the other municipalities within the region. So, we can have, I'll call for a motion, and then we can have discussion after the second if there's any. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to opt out of the homestead exemption pursuant to OC GA forty-eight dash five dash four four two point two, which is BR two oh two five dash five.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I've talked about this a great deal outside of the three public hearings that we've had with a number of people who don't, you know, who have various opinions. And I did speak in public as a citizen, not as a council member, that I was of the opinion that many people saw lower your taxes on the ballot, and everybody wants lower taxes, and they voted for it. The county, and we have a county commissioner here that I've discussed this with, has voted to opt out. The escape provision for county that opted in was to pass a local option, additional tax, which I don't think is an appetite for in this community. And if this county's opted out, there's no way that the city could pass that tax. So, I am of the opinion that we have, we are acting in the best interests of our citizens when we opt out. And I just, I think it, citizens deserve an explanation, and that's my explanation.
Can I say one quick thing too? So, at the very first meeting that we had, they also stated that the city, because we do not, the county has seven exemptions, and the county, the city, we don't, we only have the one that is required, which I believe is for veterans. But they did say that the city, if we chose to, can create our own exemptions. And this might be for something like people who are over a certain age bracket. I know Ms. Evelyn Hunter, she's ninety-seven years old, she asked me one day, she called, "Why am I having to pay these taxes at my age?" And so, maybe that is something that we look at for our citizens, especially like that, who are over a certain age bracket. Because I think it does make it so difficult for them when they're on a fixed income. And we're paying, and all of us citizens, all of us sitting up here, we're paying county taxes and we pay city taxes. So, we pay, we're paying taxes twice, and it can get really expensive. So, I wish the council, if you all would consider looking at some options like that, I think it would be very helpful. And maybe we can discuss that sometime. I'll put you over that project.
I've actually, yeah, I've actually mentioned that to council members before, that I feel like that's it all in the city. And I would, had hoped that tourism would kind of help that, but, but if that's not an option, I do think that, that over a certain age, that we should definitely.
I think you'll get a unanimous vote on that.
Can you start working on that?
I can.
That would be great, thank you. And we'll figure out all the, yeah, that's, I think that would be great.
It worries me when, and the only option I have is to vote for something for life. Because if we vote on this bill, we have voted for it for life, we can't get out of it. And it's dependent upon this flossed tax that we have to vote for, I believe, every five years. Is that correct, Doc?
Yeah, I think so, and I don't, I can't see us passing it.
I can't see, I want, I don't want to pay any more taxes, do you? So, you're asking me to vote on something that's going to be forever, and you're asking me to do that with a stipulation that this tax comes in every five years to supplement the city, if I'm not speaking out of turn?
No, I think you're doing great.
Supplement the city for what we're going to lose. And I don't think that's good business.
Well, that's what I see.
One of my sticking points was, do I want the state to be in control of my taxes or the local level?
I agree.
And I'd much rather have local level because you can, we got to vote in that, and we don't, and on the state level, so.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote? Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley?
Aye.
Okay, Angie?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
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 Okay, so it passes unanimously. Okay, so now we're moving on. Chief, would you mind to come up to the mic in case we have any questions? We're going to discuss quotes for police car first, so we'll let you and Dr. Whaley answer any questions they have.
Speak into the microphone, Chief. All right, I'm good.
Let's go on, turn away from me.
And I think the quote package, it should be in your, in here, let's see.
It is in here.
It is, there we go. Okay, you want to tell us about what you, what you're wanting here?
Well, actually, the first one was a quote on two new vehicles. I got two quotes, there are one from Wade Ford, and then you should, on your packet should be handwritten Brennan Ford. They're both the same price. The difference being is one's a twenty twenty-five with three extra options, and the other one being a twenty twenty-four with less three options. And it's for two vehicles, the price of vehicles is forty-seven nine hundred for each unit, and that's pretty much the way I'm looking at this. And speaking with some of the sales reps, that's the standard price for the Ford Explorers or the interceptor SUVs, that's what we use. So, the only difference is one's a twenty-four, one's a twenty-five, and we're getting two, correct, Chief? We're getting two, correct. So, they're both twenty-fours or two twenty-fives? Yes. And the twenty-fives have three more options than the twenty-fours? Yeah, the side, one of them's the stab protection in the driver's seat. The other one is going to be the side that's kind of stood out, the side warning, changing lane in your mirror. I think that's a no-brainer. Yeah.
Like, what's a no-brainer? The twenty-five or the twenty-four? Yeah, I would definitely not buy a used, I mean, you know.
Well, they're not used, they're, they're all.
Well, not used, but, but a year, that's done past model, but, but, so I, I wouldn't, and if there's not any money difference, and there's just a couple, couple things difference, yeah, to me, it is a no-brainer.
Yeah, the twenty twenty-five with its options is, yeah, I'll agree with, that's kind of what I was thinking as well. Well, the thing about Brennan Ford is too, though, that they usually buy about six or eight hundred of those a year, don't they? So, if they're available right now, you can drive down and pick them up right now, correct? Yeah, there's. I know in the past, we've had to wait for months to get some. So, are both of these available, whichever company you go with? Yes, yes, they're all, yeah. Okay. Like I said, the only difference is going to be those three options in a twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-five, and I would just go with the twenty twenty-five.
And, and the total for both is ninety-five eight, ninety-five thousand eight, or?
Yes, yeah, well, forty-seven nine hundred, but yes, for two of them, it's ninety-five eight. Wade combined both of them in your first packet, it's just a single unit.
Okay.
I move approval.
I second. On the Brennan Ford quote.
Brennan Ford quote.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we, I just want to make sure which ones, so, so we have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call vote. Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's good. So, is the parks supervisor here, did he bring the quotes for his vehicle? He was supposed, do you know?
What I gathered was that we had allotted him, and this, I believe, that we had allotted him fifty thousand dollars to build a metal building. He approached me with the fact that he, the metal building, he would rather have a, be able to buy a pickup truck, because he needs another vehicle rather than the metal building. So, he's asking us to change that and allow him to buy a truck rather than build the metal building.
Well, this is the first that I've heard about it, but, well, I take that back, Denny did say something, but I've got a thing on vehicles, new vehicles all the time. And I've asked for a list of vehicles, how they are, the mileage on them. So, my question would be, I mean, is there one vehicle that's down, that they can't crank and they can't use? What is just, what, what justifies that we need a new vehicle, other than they just want?
Well, the trash truck is down right now, Angie.
Okay, all right, well, I did not know that. So, so, so they're basically replacing something that's not usable.
We're going to repair the trash truck, but right now, the trash truck's down. This is the truck that they use when we have get-togethers and things, and they, they empty the trash into this trash truck. This is the truck they use on a regular basis. It's this Ford Ranger that you see with the cage on it, and you see them driving around town dumping the trash.
So, that's what we got to replace, that's what they need replaced?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay, yeah.
So, even if we change the, even if we do this, we can amend it on our budget, I believe through our amendments. Do we have any quotes, though?
You're, you're good, Rob.
Or do we, do we just?
I should have asked him to come, he did ask me if he needed to come, and I was like, I didn't think about getting the quotes or anything like that.
Well, Denny was supposed to help him get, remember, they said that at the meeting? Do we know if we have them?
Let me ask, let me ask Christie, since she's the knowledgeable one here. If we need a metal building, does this, do we not need the metal building? We were asked to approve, and we did?
He just approached me that he would rather have the truck, he has more need for the truck right now than the metal building.
You got to have breakfast and supper. Does that mean that we're going to approve a metal building next month? I, I, I just, all I want to know is, if we needed a metal building and we approved the metal building, and we need a pickup truck, does, I don't, I don't understand how one eliminates the other.
Well.
In a wish list, you've got a wish list, and so, the pickup truck is now gone above the metal building in the wish list. But if we got to have a metal building, I don't, you don't have to be too smart to know it's going to come back up pretty soon.
So, he did, he did tell us that in the department meeting, that he feels like that we can utilize all the other space we have, because we have buildings with, that are with the road department, and then we've got the water department building, and he feels like he could utilize the space there, and that it would truly be a waste of money to build a metal building? That's what he said, is that what I heard?
That's correct.
If we needed to add it, we could add it next year or something.
Yep.
He wasn't wanting to take it out this year or anything like that. He said that he needed a truck more than he needed the space.
So, bottom line, they wanted another building for just the park to do their stuff, instead of out there on windy, I guess, is it Windy Ridge or whatever? But they've got the space out there, so really, it's really a hundred percent not necessary, it just might be a little more convenient for them. So, right now, he's willing to, or he thinks the trade-off, you know, he'd rather have a truck than do that. And really, honestly, if we've got the space somewhere else, why spend fifty thousand dollars? We have a, we have a lot of other needs.
I'm very happy with that explanation.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Do you agree, Christie, that's your department, okay?
But the only problem is, we don't have a quote to vote on it, so do we, do you want to wait till next month, or give them a?
Christie, are you going to make a motion?
Well, that's what she's asking, do we want to vote it now, or we want to just table it until next month and we get our quotes?
We don't have any quotes.
Oh, yeah, all right, if you've got any quotes, you can buy it.
Yeah, we don't have any quotes. So, I make a motion, we table this till next month.
Second.
Yes, yeah. He can bring us the quotes, and, yeah, yeah, I think that's the best option right there.
Call for the votes to table it.
Yeah, okay, good deal, all right. So, we will make a motion to table that, does everybody make it first? First?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, and all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next one is F, which is a gate for Robert's Way. Angie, do you want to explain that one?
Yes, there, there's an area past Harvest, well, when you go past Harvest, there's an exit. When you go, or, there's an exit at Harvest, when you go past it, there's no exit. So, folks are having to turn around, it's, there's a lot of pedestrians down there when the train's running, you know, the back end of the light poles. It's just not really a safe thing, so, we've been talking about this gate down there, at this, at this, right after the cut-through, that would stop folks from going through. And the only ones that could go through would be property owners, deliver, deliver, delivery drivers, and the business owners. So, Denny has got a price on the gate, it's about eight thousand dollars. He's still waiting on the price for Tri-State to do something, they've got to do, and then electrician. So, I believe if we approved up to about twelve thousand dollars, that that would do it, that we'd come in under that. But I think that that would, up to twelve thousand would be good, so. And, and, and we'd, and the reason we need to go ahead and do it is because it needs to be done before the spring break, before March, really, so.
So, your motion is that we approve an expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars? We know the gate's going to be such and such, and that would include then the electric and everything else needs to be done?
Up to twelve thousand, yes, yes.
I, I second your motion.
Okay. Okay, that was the first, that was the second. Okay, let's have a roll call vote. We'll start with Bill this time.
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is bid, bids for electric and lights at farmer's market. So, who would like to explain, go over this one? Christie?
I can't, I was just giving somebody else an opportunity.
Well, it's, it's, I think it was your, your?
Well, it was our idea.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So, what, what I want to see is, we allotted in our last budget, I think a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand, I believe, for the next three years, I believe, if I'm correct, to go into the farmer's market and to repair, and, and make our farmer's market where it needs to be. So, we've discussed it, I believe everybody's aware of it. I would like to put food trucks at the farmer's market. So, I have asked Denny to get me quotes to, to add five receptacles for five food trucks. And what I would like to do, and I've spoken to Chuck, is I would like to do that for the citizens of the city of Blue Ridge, so that during lunch and things, they'll have a place that they can go over, park, get them something to eat. Angie and I discussed putting picnic tables up top. But in the process of all this, we found that the lights under there are not very good. So, we've got two quotes here. We've got one for the electrical, so that they can plug into it, and then one for the lighting. Now, what I wanted to do, and I've spoken to Chuck about this, and you can reiterate, Chuck, is I would like to give the food trucks a break on the electricity that they're going to be using, and allow the citizens, the caveat of that is that they give the citizens of Blue Ridge, when they come to eat lunch, a break. They get, they, they cut the price a percentage or whatever they want to do. So, Chuck said we could set something up on paper and have each one of them sign it. So, what I'm trying to do is revitalize the farmer's market, and eventually, the cannery as well. But I want to get this started with some food trucks, and I want to put five over there.
If it does as much, if it does as much for that neighborhood as it did for Howell Mill at seventy-five, where the food trucks park when the weather's good, I mean, that place is, there's a lot of places around Atlanta where food trucks congregate, it happens to be one. I'm, I haven't had anything at the, the one there that's at the spot, and everybody next to Home Depot, but I see lines there, so. And I know that, I've had plenty of hot dogs at that one that used to be over at, at Rumpy Old Men. I would favor that, and I think that was a good idea that somebody came up with, so I'm all for it. Now, you, is that, you just made a motion that we?
Well, there's two bids, so we're going to have to vote independently.
All right.
The bid for the electrical to, to set the food trucks is?
That's way at the back, right?
Yeah, yeah.
To run the conduit and do those things, that estimate total is nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
I got it right here.
So, I guess, Angie, do we need to vote on these independently?
Probably, but, but I do have one, one question here.
Okay.
I mean, to me, it seems like a lot of money for, for lights and some outlets, that's thirty-two thousand dollars, but, um, actually, is it more than that? Oh, gosh.
It's nineteen ten.
It's nineteen plus, then there's twelve, and then there's another twenty.
I guess the NC?
No, no, you're looking at all three bids, Angie. The other, the twenty thousand nine forty-four is a separate bid just for the electrical from another company.
Okay, so we have two bids on one thing and only one price on another?
That's correct.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I think we should start getting more than just one price, but, anyway, maybe you couldn't, I don't know, but, but.
And I do agree with you on that, since we're spending the city's money. But the problem is, is finding somebody that will come out and give you a bid and do the work. And we're having some real issues finding anybody to actually come out and work.
Okay, so it looks like then we got one then, but, but the one that's nineteen five, and then there's one that's twelve, it's by the same company, so what's the difference on it?
We had them separate, we had them break it down, so that we?
Lights is one, and electric's the other.
That's correct. The first one, nineteen five, is the electrical to hook the trailers up.
And the twelve is the lights.
For the lighting, where you and I talked about putting picnic tables, you wanted those lights changed, remember?
Yeah.
You didn't like the way the lights looked.
Yeah.
Now, does?
That's for the lights.
Blue Ridge Electric, which comes out at the same price roughly for the electrical portion of it, does not include a bid for lights.
That is correct.
So, basically, we got a, a, a decision between basically thirty-two thousand versus twenty thousand, but the twenty thousand does not include the lights?
That is correct. And if you read through the bid for the lights, we're talking about replacing the lights, and we're talking about twenty-eight total fixtures.
For twelve thousand dollars.
So, we're going to put twenty-eight new lights in the farmer's market. And, and in my opinion, no matter what we do there, that's the, that's the start. Because we have to light it up, we have to get it where it can, where people can, can have their meal and see what they're doing.
I do think this will compromise that area.
And bear in mind, we've probably got two hundred and fifty or three hundred parking places out there as well.
Have you surveyed the pur, the purveyor market for how many food trucks might be fighting to get those five spots, or whether we're going to be?
Well, food, food trucks usually schedule for a year. I haven't really approached the food truck vendors much, I've got some that want to do it, but I had to make sure that we were going to get it done before I asked them if, and, and then I have to see if they're willing to do the contract that we want to set up. Are we in favor of setting up a contract to give the, the citizens of Blue Ridge a break?
A lot of merchants, a lot of merchants give, give city residents a?
Well, what we're doing is supplying electric, though, Doc.
I understand, but I, what I'm saying is, if we, if we give the electricity?
Then they can give discount to?
Then they can give discounts, and I would, I would.
Does that mean that you have to get your ID card showing?
You'll show a license or something to show your Blue Ridge residents. I've done this because the downtown, sometimes you're two and a half hours trying to get lunch. And I want a place where?
Local people won't go down there.
A lot of people won't go down there, and I want to do a place, first of all, I want to vitalize the farmer's market, and the way to do that is bring commerce there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, if we got, got some food truck people out, so we'll make sure we got one that's got hot dogs and one that's got?
Well, I've got a lady in the audience out here that absolutely will dig up and find every food truck, because she's been after me for a while where we are with food trucks. You can raise your hand, so we know who you are. So, she's, she's willing to get in here and help us get this done.
I, I will say that we, if we were to choose the one where we have only one bid for the lights, I think we're violating our, our habit. It seems to me like, yeah, it seems to me that that's a reasonable quote, and I'm not holding out to try and find somebody else that'll put up the lights, so.
Okay. So, then we can just vote on the electrical to get that part started.
No, I think we can vote on both of them.
Okay.
I'm saying, we, I'm not holding this up to get another, I know there's not anybody beating down the door to do electric, because we have problems getting people to come to our building. We had to repair the gazebo, it took us six months to do something that should have taken four weeks. And I, I understand that the electricians aren't just falling all over themselves to do these kind of jobs, they got houses to do and stuff. So, I, I would say that this is a reasonable, reasonable use of money that will probably jumpstart our farmer's market. And everybody around here wants to jumpstart the farmer's market. And we have had, we've talked about this for three years, when I've been on this council, and I think that this is a better idea than anything else that's come up. I mean, we haven't got people that are beating down the door to have parties in there like we did when we had whatever that was there that was so good. You know, it was really good when they did the chalk thing, but those are few and far between, the food trucks are everyday.
And this could still be in conjunction when we have the ice skating.
That's correct.
And the lights will actually help with all that, because it gets pretty dark there with that too. So, I think, I think the money's going really to help overall, don't you?
Would you just make, would you, would you make that a motion?
Yeah, let's make it a motion.
Let, let, let me say one thing, though. This is quite a bit of light, it's four hundred dollars a fixture, so I would like for it to be a nice light, like a pretty light.
How about, how about I let you and Christie pick those out, would that be okay? You guys, you and Christie can be overcharged, charge over the lights.
Okay, that works.
You guys can be in charge over the whole process if you want to, that's fine.
Well, well, we, as we, me and Jack went down there one day, and we, you know, I mean, it could be, it could be fixed up really nice. You know, it could be fixed up to a nice place, but we'll have to do it a little bit at a time, but with the finished product.
With that, would there be, now, this is, this is not, this is not another Remagen Bridge too far, like in World War II, but then you've got to think about, are we going to authorize any of them to sell beer with their hot dogs?
We discussed that the other day.
We did.
Yeah, and they could, because, I mean?
They'd have to get a permit.
They'd have to get a permit.
Okay, I just?
And if you're going to go with beer, then now you're, now you're going to enlist our law enforcement.
We ran into that, and if, it is not, it is, yeah, it's good.
I am not opposed to issuing a permit for them to serve beer if they want to. But again, now we've going to have to enlist the police department to make trips through there.
That's exactly why I asked the question, because police department's mine.
It is.
And I recognize that.
It is.
We've already got a place, a problem with places that over-serve. We've already got a place, a problem with places that overserve.
Yeah, you would just, there's an ordinance that says that if you're doing that, they have to, yeah, so they would have to work with us.
I understand, I just want us to recognize at this point that there may be another chapter.
Does any other council member have a problem with them serving beer or issuing a permit if they can pass the?
I think every permit has to stand, I think every permit has to stand on its own merits.
Okay.
The, the reputation of the person that gets it, just like it would if it was a bar, and the regulations about who's selling it, because food trucks may have some people in there that are not old enough to sell beer. I just want us to know that we gonna have an issue.
Angie made a face, I'm waiting to hear what Angie's got to say.
Well, it's gotta be within a little roped-off area too, or something.
They can't carry it out, just like, and Rob will enforce that.
Yeah, Rob, Rob, the chief wants to say something about this, so.
Well, he would probably say that, like, you know, we have ordinance for restaurants and how they do their licenses. We'd probably have to invent another one just for food trucks.
Yeah.
And kinda set our ground rules of how we want to do it. It would have to be added probably to that ordinance, is what I would suggest. And it would mirror probably something along those restaurant lines, the fifty-fifty, uh, like Angie said, the roped-off area, and then, and your service versus food, you know, you're not just going down there drinking beer, you're gonna-
Yeah, the fifty-fifty would be food, food, fifty percent food, fifty percent alcohol.
And that's pretty liberal, I think.
But a food truck's only doing food, so.
They could, they could probably combine with one of the food, or one of the food vendors and say, your food, um, alcohol, because you know, most alcohol, when we've had them at the festivals, they're separate units by themselves, so.
Yeah, we'd definitely have to revise that, because I mean, I thought the food trucks would have their own alcohol.
I would think that would, I, I believe that this is a beer with your, with your Chicago hot dog, and not a separate-
Yeah, I would keep it combined.
You could do that.
The food truck has to have a business license to sell food, gotta be inspected by the health department. If they're gonna sell beer, they gotta have a beer license, or beer wine license, or whatever it is we have around here. But I don't believe that we should encourage cocktails out of them, I think.
At lunch?
Well, you know, you ever bend, you ever bend your bones for lunch?
Yeah, one, one more thing, if Angie and Christie are gonna pick the light fixtures, I'm sure that they didn't put super-nice light fixtures in there. So, the twelve thousand dollar bid for the light fixtures, I think we probably should give them a little more leeway.
Well, I will tell you, since I'm building the house, that the lights, lights, light fixtures really are generally, you can get good light fixtures for the same price you get one that looks industrial. Let's, let's, let's approve what we got in front of us.
Okay.
And then if Angie comes back, or Christie comes back and says, they just ugly, and then we'll get them to ask Jane, if Jane says they're okay.
Hey, that works. Okay, we will need a motion.
We could always give them a little more.
Absolutely.
Good.
I make a motion that we accept the NC Two Electrical LLC bid for nineteen thousand five hundred to run the conduits and do the electrical, and also the bid from NC Two Electrical to do the demo of the existing light fixtures, purchase new LED bays, twenty-eight light fixtures for twelve thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
A second, I just don't want to send them out with a platinum American Express card.
Roll call vote, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda, personnel for the police department. Chief Stewart, please, come back up. Give us your recommendations, you and Dr. Whaley.
Well, I'll, I'll say I've spent a lot of time with the chief. He's gonna tell you what we have as authorized positions that aren't filled. We had a very long discussion, as, as you've heard before, I was chairman of the crime commission during murder missing children. And I know that the officers and the chief, and those people worked many, many hours and were salaried. And I've been of the opinion that the highest ranking supervisory people should be salaried. And if we're gonna have a CID officer, I'm a, go ahead, chief, I, I've just introduced that to say, I, I, we, we picked this apart, and I agree with what he's gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, tonight, we've got two, a part-time, uh, for, I have a part-time, and then we have one, we're gonna be short, and he's also gonna be a full-time position. The part-time position, also, we've, I've worked with Chuck, and if they go over some of their hours, since we do get shorthanded, and it's hard just to plug and play, because you gotta have the golden certificate of being a certified officer, that if they do go over their thirty hours or something, you know, they won't hold it against us. So our part-time comes in, because we use them downtown, I know you have the Walkin Detail Downtown, so that's some of our part-time, and if we have vacations or people out sick, you know, we're limited to that. So that's my role for part-time, and we've got six slots, we've had that for years, we've had that since Johnny was here for the part-time. And that fills that in, and then this full-time officer, do you want me to give names since we're out here, or?
Just give, yeah, just give names, and who you recommend.
One name's Nolan Adams, he's, he's from here.
Nolan Adams, okay.
Pretty much Nolan, and then the other one's Claxton Townsend, he's from Blairsville.
Claxton?
He actually, Rusty sent him down here.
Okay.
Really? Is that Nip Adams' son?
Nolan is, yes. Nolan's Nip's.
Okay, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
They passed, they've, they've been vetted, seem like pretty good guys, and again, we, you know, like most police departments and agencies nowadays, you know, we gotta bottom in turnover on that, just can't get over the hump, but we're gonna move forward with that, and then-
And then they should have you pretty much-
Well, that would, would still be one full-time, we're still looking for one full-time, but with a part-time help, that fills in a lot for that right there.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
And, and this is for, to hire a part, a two-part-time and a full-time?
No, one part-time and one full-time.
It's my job, I, I, I recommend that we approve the plan of the police chief and the police commissioner.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's roll call vote, Dr. Whaley?
Yes.
Angie?
And again, to understand, this is for a, a, a part-time officer and a full-time officer?
Yes.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, Jack?
Yes.
And Christie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, if you wouldn't mind just a minute, would you introduce Mr. Schultz, Officer Schultz? This is the last one that we put in that we voted on last time.
He hails from Pembroke, Georgia, and South Africa, so he's traveled a long ways to kind of Blue Ridge. Lucky him, right?
And he has a very cool accent, so.
Now, Officer Schultz, will you tell us your middle name, please? Go ahead, you can. Go ahead and step up to the mic, so everybody can hear you.
My name is Dieter Visas Schultz.
Nice. Okay.
Not trying to embarrass you, officer.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
We love your accent.
Are you Afrikaans?
Uh, I am, actually, I speak, my dad was, I speak the language.
Okay, good.
Yeah, read it and write it.
You said you were from Pembroke?
Uh, I was in the military, so I'm-
So you know where Fort Stewart is, right? Yeah, I was there, yeah.
Well, thank you for joining us, we appreciate that, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Glad to have you on board, Officer Schultz.
Okay, um, the next thing we added is Darvin Couch. Could you please come up from, he's from the sheriff's department, works with our school system, and he's going to give you a little bit of information. I know quite a few years ago, and Darvin, I think it's been longer than we said, because I remember I was still a council member, and we took a picture, or maybe I had just become mayor, when we put the other light up.
Yeah.
And, but I'll let you explain what happened and what you're asking the council to do.
Is he on the three-minute time limit?
Well, we've not even been doing this.
Okay, then we're not worried about it, okay.
Yeah.
You got your time, Darvin, go ahead, brother.
Six minutes, Jack, 'cause it's you.
Twelve, I don't care, tell me, tell me what we're buying here.
Well, I appreciate y'all adding me to the list, so.
Get up a little closer to the mic, 'cause you gotta be out for the court.
He's pretty tall, too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, hold it over, you're a rock star, Darvin, you're fine.
There you go.
That's good.
Maybe some of my kids, I'm a rock star, but no, not here.
No karaoke, though.
Not here.
No care. So, very good, so thank y'all for adding me, uh, tonight, so I actually talked with the mayor on Monday, and, or maybe on Friday, I, we've had so much going, I can't remember. Anyhow, so with Temple Inc., we've got new lights down at the middle school, the, the school flashing lights. They are up to date, up to code, where the old ones were not. So just to give you a little history, the city and the school board paid half and half, basically. So, we needed those, we got those. So the ones at the high school, we actually had a vehicle hit one of the poles up our next to K's, and it's knocked the bottom half of the box and stuff off, so we don't have those lights. The good thing that you guys, and thank you for working with us so graciously, we've got the signs plus the lights, so even though the lights are not working, we still have the signs, so we can still run radar and check vehicles for speed. So, we've got one light on the low end of the main entrance at the school. It flashes sometimes at the correct times. I get calls in the middle of night or a text message, say, hey, your sign, your light down here on the low end of school is flashing at midnight, or two o'clock in the morning, or whatever. So those are controlled manually, so anytime I have to do a reset, or like for tomorrow, we have a virtual day, I would have to come in at seven o'clock or before, and I have to manually go to those boxes and set those to readjust those times. With the lights that we got last time, I just pop open my computer, and I go in there and click, 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 boom, I'm done, and they're already reset for, it's kinda like the state lights, basically. You can go in from the computer, reset them, turn them off, whatever you need to do, it's, it's very convenient, and it's, it's very helpful. So, the, the lights there, they are, the total, and, and we were very fortunate that we got this total, so, as the mayor was saying, it's, it may have been longer than a year and a half that, that it was. So what happened, when I was talking to my rep down at Temple Inc., something happened, he left the business. He did not submit the order prior to him leaving, as everybody had agreed on. So, I didn't have a clue. I knew that some of the parts were gonna take a little bit longer, and, because supply and demand, I knew that, he told me that upfront. So I didn't really worry about it, and then I got to thinking, we've been some time here, we've got some days here, we need to check on this, so I made the call, of course, couldn't get him, so I sent emails, and it got kicked back, so I reached out to Temple in general, so I got hold of Casey. So I talked, so Casey's our new rep here, so I was talking to Casey, and he said, Darvin, he said, there's nothing here, we can't even find hard copies of that quote. Definitely can't find that on the computer, and I said, okay, can you just re-quote me? So he did, so they went back to the price back then that the, where they'd sold some other ones, and they give us the same price, which we're very fortunate. So the total price that he quoted was eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So the school has agreed to pay half of that, so half of that is five thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, I'm coming with you guys to ask if y'all would be willing to pay the five thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars, the other half, to Temple for the lights. Can I throw something in to be very nice to you guys? Me and my guy that works with me at the high school, we run a lot of radar down there, and we write a lot of tickets that come here to your court, and I appreciate that, and I love the court here, it's very simple. But I'm gonna tell you, those lights mean a lot. We had a child hit in the crosswalk that you guys put up, and it wasn't cause of cross, it was because the guy was not paying no attention. So we run a lot of radar there, we write a lot of tickets, y'all probably see them, I know Barbie does, we talk quite a bit, but literally hit a student, and it knocked him probably about six feet from the bumper. So we patrol that, we watch that, and we hit that hard on tickets. And I'm, I'll tell you, the average speed through there, and this is with the lights working, is from thirty-eight to forty-four is the average speed. And we scratch them, I'll just tell you, we ride them, because safety of our students is number one. And I have several kids that walk through there, that crosswalk in the mornings, we run it in the mornings, I have several kids in the evening, actually, I've got more kids, I've got about three times of the kids that cross there in the evenings versus in the mornings. So we definitely hit it several times in the mornings. So I, I would greatly appreciate it, I appreciate y'all doing what y'all have already done, but I would appreciate if you guys would be willing to split the bill with us.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Flashing lights that are on five fifteen, if they're forty-five miles an hour, clearly are labeled during school hours.
Yes, sir.
And when people come up here, you know, at four o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, and go by that ten mile an hour sign, I mean, in their head, they're thinking, ain't no school. Is there signage that needs to be fixed, or?
No, sir, we've got all our proper signage, uh, required, or, uh, I guess recommendations as GDOT. I actually had, um, my GDOT contact come up here, he is just now retired, and, well, fixing to retire in March, so we work together very well. He actually came up his last day working, and I said, please look and see if there's anything that we're missing on these school zones, and we've got the distance, we've measured all the distance, so everything is, the only thing we're missing is the lights.
Good, okay, got it.
Yeah, everything, yeah, I stay on that quite a bit, just, I just feel like that's my baby, if you'll have it that way, but I want to make sure that's right, and our kids are safe coming through there and whatnot.
I run radar too, Doc. I run radar too, and I work a lot of school zones, and I'll just give you an example, uh, probably two months ago, I clocked one eighty-one in a forty-five school zone. Sometimes it's like those li, lights don't even exist, and I know what Darvin does, because Darvin pulled me over.
You're welcome.
So I know what Darvin did. Uh, yeah, Darvin pulled me over too. So, anyway, um, I, I don't think five thou, I don't think any child we have-
Oh, no, I'm not trying, I just want to know, this is a separate question from the five thousand dollars, it was just a question about-
I'm not disagreeing. I think, I think it's a priority to make sure that the kids are safe.
Well, I, I agree with that.
Okay, and so, safety is, is, is of course our concern, but I did like that, what you said about the tickets. So basically, those tickets can offset the price, kinda, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we ride them, I'm gonna tell you.
Angie didn't really say that.
We didn't really say that, but-
Angie did not, let me go on record, Angie did not say that.
I'm just trying to understand what he said here.
I don't understand, we just need to-
Angie said safety of the children was what was imperative.
She said that's very important.
Safety is best, but, it does sound like it's a trade-off here.
I would point out, this is not a traffic camera at the sign, like there is all over Atlanta, and that there's a bill been introduced yesterday in the legislature to make that illegal.
Right.
Because it was put up to make money for community, so, that, that's why I say that, when they see that ten mile an hour sign, and there's not any ten mile an hour, what sign says, right?
Twenty, twenty mile.
Whatever it says, because, you know, it says thirty before it, and thirty after it, and it's Saturday afternoon, and then they, they don't think twenty mile an hour ahead.
It is crazy down there, it is, and, you know, the kids park across the street many times, and it's, it's a mess.
It is, yeah.
It is.
And I, I just want to make sure they're crossing safely, and here's the thing too, we don't, we don't hide, I sit right in the middle of the road, running right, and, you know, Shook Hill said, either above me or below me, and then I'll call them out, but we don't even hide. We, what we want, we want safety, and we want, you know, the vehicles to slow down, you know, but when you're, when you're getting from, and, and I won't say majority, but several, when you're getting from fifty and above, I stopped a lady the other day, I said, other day, it's probably been several months now, it's fifty-six. And I said, you not see me sitting there in the middle of the road, she says, yeah, but I, I gotta get to DMV.
Okay.
I said, okay, you're gonna be late.
Here's your ticket.
How long did it take you to scratch that ticket out?
A little longer than normal.
That's funny, so, so you'll, and you'll handle this, you'll make sure it gets processed this time?
Yes, I will.
Okay, perfect, yeah, that sounds good.
'Cause the other thing I done, I had actually got Casey to come up here, 'cause he had not been up here. So, he drove up from Woodstock, that's where he lives, before he went to the office, and me and him went and looked at the middle school one as well, and just make sure nothing has changed, and then we looked at this one, and he said, here's what you need. I just need the go.
Okay, I guess we just need a motion and a second, and then vote on it, so thank you.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion that we approve whatever the cost ends up being, up to six thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, it was fifty-six something, so, yep.
I said up to six.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, Dr. Wylie, Angie?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank y'all.
Thanks. Okay, um, the next thing is discussion items, and we're gonna, we'll have George, George Kelly, he, uh, is still, you're still employed by the city, aren't you? On a contract basis, and he's going to give us some discussion. I believe this project started when we all first came on board several years ago, it's been three years now, and Eric, when you guys hired him, he started working on this, and then George became the point of contact, it was kind of, uh, I remember you guys wanted him to start looking for different types of avenues to get funding, and this is one project, I really wasn't aware of it until Eric left, and then I started getting notifications, and you, or you did, and then I got copied, so.
Right.
So, you can enlighten us all about this project, and then we'll go from there.
All right, uh, Mayor, Council, I don't know how much you may know about this project, or may want to know, even. Uh, I guess the thing that's been brought before you is, there's this cost that they want to be paid quickly, or, or as soon as possible. And, and I'm gonna try to get that out there to you as quickly as I can, so you'll know what the job is tonight. But, this project started back when Eric Soroka was here, Eric was always looking for ways to try to improve things in the city, and this, I believe, came up through that, you know, that sort of search. It's a, it's a GDOT project, so anybody that knows GDOT knows it's a monster organization. So, a project coming through GDOT is gonna have, you know, a lot more overhead and a lot more, uh, stuff to it, than a project that's started and developed locally, we'll say. Uh, this project, we've handled, we handled projects similar to this in the city when I was here, you know, at a different cost, I'm sure, uh, so, this is not something that can't be done by the city locally. It's just that, in, in, you know, in this great state of Georgia, every department has these, these, uh, programs where they try to help municipalities through grants and so forth, and this is one of them. It's a Transportation Alternatives Program, which, if you have alternatives like pedestrian bridges, trailways, bike paths, things like that, uh, you can finance, design, and build these things through GDOT. And, uh, for some municipalities, and I'd say similar to Blue Ridge, it's probably not always the best alternative, but it is an alternative, if you're looking for alternatives. So, so this project is basically what they called, the project manager and the team, the three sidewalks, because there's three separate maps that show sidewalks on three different areas in the city that they were, they were gonna plan, design, and build. So, uh, that's done in GDOT through a series, I mean, through their project management process. And their project management process goes from task order one to task order two to task order three, until they complete the project. So, this is task order one for this project, it involves three different sites, probably, I guess, two thousand feet of sidewalk, and then some street crossing devices down in the main part of the city there. So, it's not a lot of work, but task order one, the total cost for it is five hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and nine cents. So, so that's, it sounds like a lot, of which twenty percent of is the responsibility of the city. So, the city's portion of that would be twenty percent, which is a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Now, to complete this project, this is only for task order one, and to complete the project, it would take three task orders, I think. This one, and then a execution task order, and then some sort of a completion task order. And each one, I mean, the second one would probably be, in my estimation, it would be as much as this one. So, that's gonna double the price of it there, and then maybe the last one would be half that much again. So, two and a half times this amount is what the city would ultimately pay to do it, but this is a five-year project. This is planned to, to occur over a five-year period, so you're not gonna see this project until, you know, what? Twenty-nine, something like that, thirty? Uh, so it's gonna be out there before you would see it, and like I said before, it's, that program is not the best program for every minute, every municipality, and this may be a case where it's not the best application of the program, but it is an alternative. I mean, if you're looking for alternatives in ways of finding, you know, resources and recreation and things for your city, this is one of them. So, so that's, that's basically where this thing is at in a nutshell. Uh, the GDOT needs a decision from the city as soon as they can produce it on whether or not they want to go ahead with this task order. And that's just based on the fact that you're gonna continue it in the years to come. You're gonna go, go ahead with task order two, and then with task order three.
Okay, so I have a question. Who decided on these locations, and can they be changed?
Uh, I think they were decided on, uh, and I don't know for a fact. I think whenever we were planning for, uh, repaving the roads in Blue Ridge, these sidewalk projects kind of came up as an auxiliary or an alternative, because we found that some of the sidewalks were not what they should be, you know, where we were gonna pave roads. So, um, I think, in, maybe, maybe Eric sat down with someone, Joe Patterson maybe, you know, in recreation, and they came up with, uh, leg number one of the project, which goes from Summit Street at the farmer's market down to Main Street, up Main Street to Hall Street, which is where we stopped on the sidewalks that the city did. So, it was gonna tie these pieces together, and then the second part is McKinney Street, which goes from Old Seventy-Six down through the city, up to West First Street. So, so it kind of ties in that road, which has been paved by the city, with new sidewalks. And then downtown next to, uh, on Depot and Church Street, the crossing mechanisms there at the crosswalk don't work half the time, so the plan was to replace those with a new system of crosswalks and crosswalk, uh, control devices. So, I think they just sort of became a part of the plan.
You mentioned that a significant number, that, that there was sidewalk done by the city that these are gonna hook to. With that historical number in your head, we couldn't do this project for the hundred, for the hundred and twelve thousand dollar, twenty percent internally, could we?
No.
Okay, now, if we were gonna do it all by ourself, would it cost half that much, or would it cost that much?
This project, uh, I think, it, it's hard for me to say at this point, I mean, I, I I have historical information on what the city paid to, to get sidewalks done, you know, prior to this, and in, in our previous sidewalk project, but I don't really recall what the costs were, it's.
Do you know, but the hundred and twelve's not just it, though, so, and the thing is, is we don't really know what the other two, unless you've got a price, unless the states give us a price on the other two tasks, possibly four, there's, it, it wouldn't really make sense to vote on something that we don't know what we're even, how much it's gonna be, really.
Yeah, I think if you do vote on this, you're gonna have to vote on it knowing that at some point in the future, two years, three years, whenever you can, you're gonna have to vote again for task order number two.
Now, I have seen a total somewhere, it came through a while back, and I sent that on to Denny. That was before, that was the end of last year.
You remember what it was?
I, I, don't quote me on this paper, but I want to say at least two million, because I, or the totals, because I know what we were gonna be, over two hundred thousand, possibly three for our part. But I, like I said, I handed that over to Denny, and, um, he, so there, there's documentation somewhere.
Okay.
About what it is, but, you know, and that may, if you guys want to check, take a chance and look at it, or, you know. My question, down here in front of the school, near Bortown Road, White, White Path, Fab Tech, all that, with the county, you know, owns that, is that going to be a crosswalk right there, because we, that needs it right there?
I think there is a, I mean, I mean, let me look on the map.
Do you see that down there, guys?
There's, there's three.
Page one.
I have another question in that general area, we've got sidewalk from Hall Street past Grumpy O' Men's, why are we replacing that sidewalk?
Well, I don't think we would, I think we would stop them.
But it's marking red, George, I mean.
Yeah, it probably shows it here, because that's what we talked about to begin with, this has been in the process for months.
So, we put the new sidewalks in, I think, after this was finished, so this, this task force would, all this would need to be a revised
Right.
project, if you guys want to move on.
You understand what I'm saying? We've got sidewalks from Hall Street now, all the way up to where the old Gin Walker building is, we've already got sidewalks there.
Yeah. I mean, to me, this is just not even areas that, that there's a lot of traffic, and it's, it's a quarter of a million dollars to, we don't know what, and we've got a lot of other things to do.
So, we did have a request several years ago for, for sidewalks, um, going in front of the school, like around Industrial, like in front of the old, you know, going out that way in front of the school, going back towards Mineral Springs, like out to our area, they said, you know, why don't we have sidewalks there?
What would that be for, though?
For residents to get into town, so, like, coming up to the.
Well, what I would like to see.
Well, that would be a better location than to me this, but.
What I would like to see is a revised version of this, because I've already pointed out, we've got, you know, a thousand yards of sidewalk right there that's already in, and it's on this, so I want to see, two things I would like to see is I would like to see a revised version of this, George, and I would like to know what the city's gonna be paying for this before we ever think about voting on it.
Yeah, I can understand that, and I'm sorry, I can't give you that.
Angie said it, I mean, that, you know, we don't know what we're voting on here, we can't do that. And then that, you know, when I look at this and I see that we've got a thousand feet of sidewalk, it, you know, are we double paying for that? What are we gonna do with that sidewalk?
Right, well.
It needs to be taken out.
I mean, in the first place, if it's managed by the city, the city's not gonna let sidewalk be torn out that was put in last year and replaced.
Right, right.
So, so we wouldn't do that.
So, it needs, that needs to be addressed in this work, yes.
And maybe look at new areas, like I was talking about, maybe.
Areas that, that'd be more beneficial to the citizens.
I think to get it revised, you're gonna have to approve this project, put it in design, and they'll revise it in design.
That ain't gonna happen.
See, I mean, that's what makes this not such a good program.
And I don't think any of the other councils are gonna approve something blind.
Yeah, this is probably not the best program for, for this type of project.
Okay. Is there an end date for this grant?
Any what?
The end date? We gotta have it signed, sealed, and delivered?
No, the only end date that they've given us is by the first week in May, I think it's by the sixth of May, this decision about go or no-go has to be made, or they'll add another three months to the, to the.
So, you don't think they'll resign, you don't think they'll redesign this and talk to us about where we would like to see some sidewalks before we have to vote on it to get them to redesign it?
Well, maybe, they might, they might go back and say, oh, okay, our red line's going too far, well, let's just shorten the red line. But you wouldn't have anything more than that, and I could probably do that for you.
Angie, would you want to get with them, maybe, and Denny, and look over this? And maybe you could ask her to come up here, the lady who's over this project, and then you could re-present it to us?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Do you want to table it, Angie, or do you want to vote on it?
Well, for me, I think there's much more things that's coming up, we don't really know where our budget's, I mean, where our finances is. I, I, I feel like to commit to a quarter of a million dollars right now is not really the right time, so I probably would not support this, it don't matter where it's at. But yes, I can, I can do that for y'all, if y'all want to know.
Then I make a motion that we table this until Angie gets back with us after she's talked to them, to see if we can get a revision. That's my motion.
I'll second it, make the suggestion, maybe she'd talk to the board member that we have that's up here and loves Blue Ridge and lives in Blue Ridge.
Good idea. Our, our GDOT?
We, we got, we got an inside track to GDOT.
Okay, um, if, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, thank you, George, good to see you.
Thank you, George.
The next thing is public comments, um, is anyone, would anyone like to speak? And you will have three minutes, please, and Brenda, do you mind to time that? Mary Ann, where is the timer? Can you use your phone, Brenda? Oh, you got it up there, okay. Hey, and before Troy starts, I'd like to say congratulations on a successful Fire and Ice, even though it rained.
Yep, that's what I'm coming up to say.
It looks pretty good, okay, good.
Hi, guys, my name is Troy Sherberon, I'm a co-president of the Blue Ridge Business Association. I just wanted to thank you guys and just kind of give you an update of this past weekend, which was, uh, ours, the Fourteenth Annual Fire and Ice. And, um, and a big shout out to, thank you for the city, and then also for Denny and his crew of getting everything set up, and a big help, real smooth, even with all the rain, uh, the rain came, started coming about six o'clock in the morning, Denny was out there with the crew, getting electrical down, and people were setting up, and we're all kind of worried, but right about twelve, uh, it went away, and, and we had a good time. Looks like we had probably just under about three thousand people, um, which was, which was great compared to, you know, what we weren't sure was gonna happen. But, um, just wanted, um, the great feedback from the, both had locals and, um, visitors that come in, so it was a nice mix of everybody, and they, um, everyone had a really good time, just wanted to give an update and say thank you, guys.
Thank you.
That's it, see, not even three minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next, anyone else, would, would anyone else like to speak? It's good to see, out in the audience, I actually see several city residents, so, I see one, two, three, four, that's awesome. Yeah, it's good to have you guys here, especially you first timers, so. Okay, anything else, anybody? Do we need to go into executive session, anyone?
Okay, do we need to talk about, discuss with, um, talking about with Dub, or, yeah, Dub Doer?
Do we need to discuss the meeting we had today?
No, do we need to discuss in executive session about, about that, uh, employee thing?
We can, if you'd like to.
Well, I think it'd be an opportunity for you to let everybody know, and then everybody can decide kind of what they want to do, or how we want to go.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to go into executive?
So moved.
Okay, Sarah, second? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Turn the camera. For, for our viewers, for our viewers at home.
Our viewers, that's my experience, we, we recording?
Oh, so we are.
Go ahead, Doc.
Okay, we'll call, um, if you will, we'll call this.
I moved the executive session over.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second. All in favor, raise your hand, okay?
Move for adjournment.
Sarah, second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, okay, meeting's adjourned.
All opposed by a like sign.
Oh, my goodness.
I got a question for, a, a question for everybody, everybody, really, maybe just the paper copies for, for our agenda, this stuff, does everybody want it? I feel like it's kind of a waste, we got our, our, and that was, it's a big thing, but do y'all like the copies or not?
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind having a copy of this, just in.